Good evening, and welcome to the Franklin City Council meeting for May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. We're going to start today's meeting with two public hearings. The first public hearing is going to be on Soret Farms. And we get started with this meeting.
Good evening, everybody. I have an updated plan, but I'm sure if I have copies for...
Basically, what this is reflective of is the site plan. And it's reflective that the parking comparison out of site plan, and it's reflective of the parking is shifted in the, it's still going to be located in the back of the property, but the parking is shifted to the eastern part of the property. So that way further away from the homes on Front Drive. I could pass this on to you. If you want. I'm sorry, I may have overheard, but this is the, this is the barn here, and the farmhouse is right here. And this line here was the original location of the parking. So basically, what we're doing is we're shifting the parking further east in order to keep it away from homes on Front Drive. And then there will still be that ten-foot landing bed that'll be along the perimeter of the property. And then the other item that I wanted to share with the committee and the community is that one of the concerns that... One of the concerns... Hello? Hello? I should speak of not quite a voice. And if it's not loud, please let me know. But one of the questions that concerns it then is that would people that will come to the Soret Farm, would they pull into Calum Drive by the state? And then one of the things that we want to do for legal for that is these are signs that have been prepared. We would not install them without the support of the approval of the city of Franklin. But there would be two signs, and both signs would be posted at Center Road, and they would be about five hundred feet away from the property. So it would be directional. So when people are walking down the street around Center Road, they can see these signs. These signs have been made to the standards of Department of Transportation, so they are reflective. So in order to prevent anybody from that, just going to the, it's a Soret Farm, and then going to the... And then the other thing that we wanted to do is that we wanted to make certain that your, somebody had mentioned that one of the individuals that we've been working with is sometimes when people have events, outdoor events and celebrations, they want to have, like fireworks or whatever. And one of the things that we are going to do is we're going to put in a, like an operating agreement with any potential users of that, is that anything such as that, we would have to get like a special permit. Or I'm sure we need it anyways. There are five partners on private property, but the only way we would permit that is with individuals that have a private, an operator, and we'd have to have a special permit for most of the property. I just wanted, somebody had mentioned that that is a concern. So I just wanted to address that we would require a special permit of anybody that is using this code. And then I didn't have any, I also did have some questions from council or people.
Do you have any comments, questions? Barry?
I'll get it.
I've got nothing further?
No.
Good.
I don't see a scale there. How far did you move that? Does it, do you know? Is that like fifty feet or a hundred? It looks like about the length of the barn that we need to spray.
Yeah. And then we're keeping that same, when you walk up there, it's almost like a natural break where this, where we're showing the evergreen, that's almost like a natural break in the property. And there is remnants of a fence there, so I think at one point years ago, it was probably a pasture there. So that this evergreen line is really going to follow the tree line. And then from the evergreen line to this pasture here, this would just be grass, it would just be green space.
Do you have plans on taking these trees down that would block between there and Ferny?
No. I want to hear. There, there is an old tree again behind the farmhouse, and that old tree, it's estimated it's about a hundred and fifty years old. And we're going to trim it, we're not going to take it down. We're just going to have to do some trimming of it. And then there is one tree behind the garage, and the garage in between, this is again the farmhouse, and then the barn, the garage in between the farmhouse and the barn. And then that tree, that's what we can remove, but it's just drawn into the back of the tree, but we're moving our attention out of the tree.
No other questions? Any public comment?
Yeah, I have some questions for Dave. At one meeting, you, someone talked about, someone talked about a fence, a mound or a mound between the parking lot and the field. Is that what you, you said painting bed?
Yes, it's a ten-foot wide painting bed with evergreen trees.
Is that just a flat bed?
I think there's a specific code that it has to be a raised bed. So there is a specific requirement in New Franklin code, and I believe it is because of raised mound beds.
Okay, so it's going to be a ten-foot wide raised bed, raised mound with trees on grounds?
Natural, but evergreen, and you can't have a painting bed that's evergreen, right? Exactly, but then the existing trees wouldn't remain.
Okay. Another question was, I believe that New Franklin has an ordinance for sound.
Right. If you have an ordinance.
Is that at ten o'clock at night?
The sound full effect is at ten o'clock. But there's other components of that that speak to excessive noise before ten o'clock.
Okay. Is that on decimals? Is that what it is?
There's not currently a decibel reading in the noise ordinance. It's, I think, explained, it's what they call reasonable man standard. So to the reasonable person, if this is excessive, then there could be potential action. Is that correct, Paul?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a standard. Offensive to a person of reasonable sensibilities. It's a subjective standard. We haven't adopted a decibel level at this point. Or ever, we've never had a decibel level. Certainly, decibel levels would be a factor that could be considered, but it's, there's no, there's no bar that's set for excess of a specific decibel level.
Okay, but you decided that at ten o'clock was going to be the cutoff, correct, for any activities?
We haven't set a specific time. I mean, we recognize that there's homes close by, so we have to do that as neighboring here, so we can, you know, the barns.
I was just curious, as the sound travels through the walls of a barn, and I'm not sure what the interior is going to look like, if it's going to be insulated, is it going to be just some flat boards on the outside?
It's going to, part of the, I mean, so the building is the historic nature of it.
Okay, so it's just going to have some wood boards?
Right, but we're, part of it, we haven't gone down this yet, but one of the things that we want to do is retain a sound engineer, so they retain that sound. You know, you can, we can't change the interior structure of the property because of the historic nature of it, because it's listed on the National Park, but we can add like sound bedding, whatever you know that it might be like, it's almost like foam that's covered in fabric. So whether something that absorbs the sound in the barn.
Okay, so you're just not going to have a, just a, I have to, what, plant, you know, a law or?
No, it's not going to be, it's not designed in drywall.
Oh, so something to keep the sound inside the?
Exactly. And what the standard of National Parks serves is if you do something, it can only be temporary. So they don't view drywall as temporary. So if we, like, sound insulation would be like, you know, fabric or something to absorb sound, like sound, so that could be just assembled and mounted on some sort of walls.
That was your train of thought. I will tell you, and you, that in the event that passes, the city will strongly urge a ten P M secession of activities at that location. That would be consistent with what we do at our own Tudor House. So I was telling you upfront.
I don't know if this question is for you, sir, or for the council. A month ago, we had a meeting and we talked about doing a traffic study, and also the council going up, checking things out, and maybe taking some measurements to see what that capacity could be. We talked about stuff like that. Did any of that stuff happen?
So I, I want to speak for all the council I know, and a lot of us visited both the Soret Farms location here on Center Road, and a couple of us went to another location up, you know, west of Cleveland. Looked at both, and the reason we went to the other location is to see the quality and kind of consistency of what the program may look like, smaller scale, but what are we getting, you know, what kind of quality we're getting. And I believe, just to speak for myself, I mean, I found everything to be acceptable as far as quality and concept and the whole general, you know, general idea of how this is going to be operated. As far as the capacity, I think that's something that's going to be more once they, I don't know that we can have a capacity yet until this thing's fully designed, because that will dictate floor space, and that gets the going department involved, and fire marshal and everything else. I believe it's our fire marshal, fire chief that sets the capacity out of that location. So that is a further out thing. That's not something we'd see right now. I've got a question real quick for Barry. I know this is a three-year conditional use permit. When does the clock on that conditional use start? Does it start when it gets approved, or does it start when it goes into operation?
It would be set whenever it's approved at that point.
So in theory, if we were to vote on this and pass it, next meeting?
Well, one thing I was going to say...
This is a three-year conditional? That's in here somewhere?
Yes.
Yes.
Where?
We're looking at, we're actually...
There was a discussion of, somebody had suggested adding that.
I thought that was a condition from the planning and zoning.
No, it is not.
Okay.
Well, we're looking at, actually, there is a three-year mention in the...
Not yet, Barry.
But no, I wanted to emphasize that Fred and I are working to have that changed, that it's going to be, you know, based on, you know, really month-to-month or whatever. I mean, it's not a three-year review.
I want to be clear, and as to the proposed use, and the, as presented to planning and zoning, under this conditional application, there's nothing in our code that imparts the three-year review. There are a few select uses in the code.
True.
I can't remember, that's, that's due, but, only a few, but this is not one of them.
I think we talked about...
You talked about adding that this time.
That if the, the three-year wouldn't necessarily, necessarily be necessary, because it is a conditional use. If they violate the conditions on that use, then they're able to revoke that conditional use if necessary for, you know, proceed. But we don't, we don't necessarily need to have a expiration date.
We want to take that out, by the way, you got a party for a year. We want to have it, you know, that it can be done at any time, that it can be brought up for review, just to clarify.
So it's just a conditional permit?
Yes. I'm sorry. The other question that I had was about the traffic study, was that done on Center Road? It said that was going to be done before the next meeting. I was curious if that happened.
Nothing's been done by the city.
We are not.
I have a question, pretending to be that Center itself should just pass. And this is, I hope this happens on speaker, but how, how much are you going to have a genuine management of this property once it's, are you hiring a management company? Or you had said there's not going to be, you're not going to be directing any catering or any of that?
Right, we are, we have a partner that's going to operate this. Currently, we're having discussions with a partner, how we approve on this. We do want to talk to local operators as well. The operator that we, that we've been talking to has an event center that they currently operate, and then part of, and they currently have a wedding planner, and they also have an event center that they operate. And then part of that use when they have an event is they have something on site that that they do as well.
Part of what I'm wondering about is if this passes and this event center opens, will this be, will there be any kind of like employment opportunities for anyone to leave their community?
Oh, yes.
We don't have a lot of places for male people to work, and I just wondered how that would work.
That's a great question. One of the things that is needed, whenever there's an event, you have to set it up. So you need tables and chairs, and that will all be on site. Every different wedding has, wedding has a different way they want it set up. But in talking to the potential partners, they're always looking for people to set it up, and children, not children, but teenagers are a perfect, perfect candidate for that.
So there may be one that...
No question, no question. And then, actually, we would have a police officer on site for all of that. And it would, it would be something that we would pay for. And at the end of the day, it would be whoever's hand and the wedding would pay for it. But what we'd do is continue hiring a police officer, but it would be offered to New Franklin Police Officers.
Was that, is that for security, or because there was talk about danger for people entering and exiting? Is it a traffic, or do we?
We want to be able, we want to make sure from the neighbors' perspective, if there is a traffic issue, or if somebody, you know, there isn't going to be alcohol there. So if somebody is drinking, and there's a police officer, they're, they're not going to, they're going to keep eyes on it. So it's really, it's, we feel based on input of the community, it's important that they have that.
Dave, your managing partner that you're looking at, are they local?
Yes, but local, they're in, in the, in the Cleveland area, in town. But again, we, there's been, I know there's three good operators in New Franklin. We do want to, you know, talk to them at some point, but we don't want to get carted at the horse. I mean, if we want to start talking to people, engaging, if we don't, we may not be able to do it. If we don't get their support of the community and the council, we don't want to waste any of this time. But we do have a local, I mean, not a local operator, but we've had conversations with someone, but, you know, assuming we give their approval and proceed with the project, then we do want to increase those conversations with those local operators that we're suggesting.
Dave, another question is when Barry and I are out there walking property with you, the barn, you notice there's a lot of gaps and stuff at the exterior siding. What will be done with that? Because if you're not doing an interior covering on that, will there be stuff done to tighten up those gaps, or how will that look?
Those gaps will be, there'll be new siding installed, where those gaps are at. Not all the siding will be replaced, but where those gaps are at, who will be filled in with new sign.
All right, so essentially, is it going to be heated?
Yes, heated in here.
So will there be any type of insulation in there that you can talk about?
No, there won't be. And that's why I think it's going to be a season off stage.
Okay, Dave, can you tell us, is there any tax revenue that gets pushed back into the city in Franklin, from this?
What, any local wages? People will pay the taxes on the local wages and stuff.
Like nothing from the building and the?
Well, the property tax, if somebody has an event there, I'm sure they're, they're on for sale taxes, maybe out of local, but I'm sure...
I think this will be property tax primarily. I'm sure the value of the property is going to go up, and so there'll be the property tax revenue, income tax revenue, depending on the extent of time that these people work here. If they're just here sporadically, they may have been taxed where they live as opposed to taxed here. So I think that the primary revenue benefit of the city would be from property tax. And, and, and I wouldn't say it's nominal, because it's going to be significant improvement in the value, an increase in the value of the property, but it's probably thousands of dollars, not tens of thousands.
Could be sales though? Could, would it be sales tax?
No, I wouldn't come to the city. I would go to state.
And currently, we're wrong, but if the workers come out of different counties, isn't that, any of that way?
Depends on how long they work here.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes, I have one. The, the letter recommendation that's before council has eight conditions. And I didn't know if anyone on council was going to raise this, but I'll raise it. As been pointed out, there was a discussion about, there was a suggestion maybe to add a three-year review, and then I think on further discussion, we talked with legal, et cetera. We really don't need it, because at a three-year review, you'd be determining whether or not he's compliant with the conditions. That would be the issue. We couldn't just arbitrarily throw him out after three years if he was in compliance with all the conditions. So the key is in the conditions. And if he's not compliant with the conditions, then the conditional use could be revoked at any time. And so I would ask council to consider adding a condition relative to traffic, because that's the only one that's not in there. And I propose some language that it would be condition eight, or condition nine, that would be vehicular access and egress, I'll do this slower later, I got a copy, in case it happens. Vehicular access and egress to and from the property shall be designed and maintained so as not to create nuisance or safety issues or concerns on surrounding public streets and roads. It's somewhat generic, but it, I think it gives us enough teeth. We don't know what those might be. But if it turns out that there's something that's significant safety concerns, significant traffic concerns, then that would be a violation, a potential violation of the condition. I would think, first of all, we'd come back to the, to the owner and say, hey, listen, you have a problem here. You're going to have to come find some way to fix this, to alleviate this, you know, these issues as it relates to safety. So I would recommend that we include that condition as well, as opposed to being silent on that issue. Because it's a, I know it's something that matters to the people that live there, and I have no doubt that Mr. Berkowski will be compliant and can achieve that. If he couldn't, then you shouldn't, we shouldn't be here if we're creating, if we're creating safety issues. So that's my thought for council to consider. If you want to do that, you can add that as a condition number nine, as part of your final vote on this, whether or not to approve it tonight.
For the audience, did you go through the other eight conditions that they're breaking off?
Let's see. And I will just, did somebody have a comment? Did you have something you want to say?
The only question I, if that is, like, we, or not, say, for example, we have a Blossom music festival, and we have all those cars there. That's certainly something that we would be in violation of. But we all know there's that curb in that road, and if it's just the natural curb or the natural environment or the traffic, if that should be being thirty-five miles, I mean, we shouldn't be, that should be, you know, we shouldn't be held with that because of the design of the road or the traffic. But just so we're on the same page, if we have too many people there that's causing traffic jams, the burden's on us. But if it's the design of the road or the curb of the road, it should, it's...
And I don't want to try to be your council on this, but I will just tell you from council's perspective, there's a reason in this degree.
Right, right.
Okay, so the conditions, if this gets approved, it's approved with the curbs in the road, et cetera. We couldn't come back later and say, wait, that curb's too dangerous for you guys. Okay? What we're really talking about is if there's a maximum flow of traffic going out at the same time. If we have significant reckless operations, that maybe they can be addressed by additional policing. Okay? In a worst-case scenario, it could be you've got to find another way out of there. You have to consider another exit. That's my thinking on this. Ultimately, those are litigation issues, all right? And we're never in a hurry to litigate. We're always in a hurry to try to resolve. But I just think it makes sense to have some language in here relative to traffic, so that there's some teeth in the event that unforeseen problems develop relative to, to the traffic. I don't expect there will be, quite frankly, from the conversations we've had with other similar venues. We talked to the, to the owner who has the barn down in Peninsula, and similar size, et cetera. And the information we got from them, from the city's perspective, was that usually the people leaving in shifts just don't leave all at once. These types of barn weddings are not necessarily the kind of rock is crazy, you know, dancing on the table type of events. So they happen to have those problems down there. Somebody have a question? And I don't know if it's from me or from, I don't mean to inject myself. And I'll be happy to go through the rest of these conditions.
Just one question. Is it possible to implement discreet flashers or something during the operation of those venues on that curb, Barry?
We can talk to, and we can talk to the service department on that.
Something about hidden entries or blind entries?
Yeah, and I'm sure you can cooperate with that. David?
Oh, of course.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, the other conditions that came out of planning and zoning, this was a letter from planning and zoning to council. The following conditions, one is perfunctory. Final applications, reviews, inspections, permits, et cetera, are required by the city's New Franklin Fire Department and San County Building Department, inclusive of maximum occupancy restrictions. So there's a requirement there, but that's all statutory anyway. Offense or barriers shall be installed to ensure security and privacy for adjoining residential properties. The driveways and parking lots shall be paved per zoning regulations. Wedding ceremonies are permitted to occur outside of the barn, however, all celebration activities shall be limited to the interior of the barn. All sound amplifications, number five. All sound amplification, music, shall be contained within the interior of the barn. A special event permit shall be required from the city for any outdoor activities other than outdoor wedding ceremonies. So for instance, if you got into something that was going to be fireworks or something, you'd have to get a special permit. A special event permit shall be required for anything held on the property, I guess I'll read that again, other than celebrations such as weddings, birthdays, anniversaries, meetings, retreats, or corporate events. And the city engineer shall conduct a final review and final approval of the event facility site plans, inclusive and not limited to store water management, utilities, paving, lighting, fencing, and signing. That all has to be approved through Summit Soil as well. So those are the conditions. And what I've suggested would be condition number nine.
Any other comments?
I'm still concerned about it fitting in with the character of the neighborhood. The one thing that I had particularly been concerned about was renting a house out on a, you know, nightly, weekend, whatever basis that's not connected with the event. I gave you some paperwork about what it says in our city code about that.
So, and the paperwork, did any slope to a bed and breakfast? And I believe you're looking, it's not going to be a bed and breakfast, where it's...
It's not going to be a bed and breakfast, it's going to be an Airbnb. We are going to have short-term rentals, but it would be through Airbnb.
Okay, then what does that fall under in our definition of our code?
I don't know that we have defined in our code. That's something that we haven't regulated as a...
Okay. So the only definition we have that actually fits this is the one in our code, so we're just going to ignore that?
No, we're not ignoring any. There's no, this isn't a bed and breakfast. And it's, Airbnbs are, that's a generic term. This is a rental. And that's, and we've looked hard at it, and that's a topic for another day. We've actually had a resolution, and maybe talk about trying to regulate. We've talked with the legal people, we'll see how difficult it is around the state, around the different municipalities that have difficulty enforcing those rules. At one point in time, there was a proposed legislative action to prevent municipalities from regulating Airbnbs, short-term rentals. I don't know if that'll be revisited, but so what it falls under is a rental, just the same as if I decided to rent my house to somebody for three days, it's a rental. Or I rented it to him for a month, or three months, or whatever.
So would all of these conditions apply in that case, with, as far as outside sound, outside activities, bonfire kill, 3:00 AM?
You know, right now, we have the farmhouse, and we could rent that out today. And that, we don't need any approval or support from, from council or the community. And we can do that. We haven't done it yet, and we're not ready to do so. But it's going to be short-term rentals, so the furniture will be short-term rentals. As a mayor, so that's no different than what he could do with his house or any, anybody in the community could do with their home. So it's going to be a short-term rental. Instead of leasing it for a year, we're going to have a minimum stay of probably two nights or three nights.
All the laws that would apply to any residential, any residence would apply here, whether it's noise, fire, or anything else, they all still apply. There's no, there's no blanket exemption or anything like that.
And to address that further, Mr. Daniels, myself, Mayor, and legal council, we had many meetings here in this actual room, talking about a resolution, how the city can actually put something in place, because... put something in place, because we heard of some neighbors in other communities that had some issues with that. And that's where we were briefed on the issue, I think it's at the state level, they were trying to push legislation through. And there are so many legal issues where it was, I would say it's an uphill battle, but it was a losing proposition to begin with. We had no authority to regulate to that minor of a detail. And that's when we kind of pulled back on that.
And then you invite litigation, and you may find yourself, on the wrong end, expensive litigation.
So maybe it's something we've looked at in pretty detail, you know, it was a year, year and a half ago. And we end up nowhere but.
Okay, today's discussion is not about short-term rentals at all, it's about the sort of farm and event center, correct? So this has nothing to do with the event center?
But this is.
Part of the property, but it's not the event center resolutions in front of us. So, doesn't, that was me.
Any other comments?
I have just one question, just to clarify. You mentioned that there's going to be a ten-foot wide, bounded area between the parking lot and the field, and that you just mentioned there's going to be a fence. That was number two.
A fence or a barrier, that's what it says.
Oh, or a barrier?
Yeah, shall be installed.
This was such a, it's either or, you know, fence or it could be a, how can I hear it?
These were planning and zoning's.
Are you going to make that condition? So, can you elaborate on, because I've heard about that, conditional permit or whatever? That is not those eight things, that's just the.
How, how conditions?
Those are. Conditions for what, occupancy, for passage, or?
To use the property.
Yeah.
For the event center.
Okay, to use the property for the event center.
I mean, there are permitted uses in the code for every zoning district.
Yeah.
That you don't, and you, and then there's conditional. So this is in the category conditional. And all that means is that it's allowed there, but planning and zoning has to determine are they going to recommend it? And if so, are they going to add any specific conditions to it?
There are no variances acquired for this property?
No, no change on the zoning district or anything else. Okay. Got it.
Just to clarify on top of that, because those conditions aren't the only thing that matters, all of New Franklin's policies and procedures and all that.
The entire rest of the code applies to all that. So for instance, the height of the fence, the height of the barrier, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, the conditions are in addition to all existing.
And are there other event centers in the city? Do any of those other event centers have conditions similar to that?
I don't, I don't believe any of them were in districts that required a conditional use permit.
Okay.
But I will tell you that what's suggested here is, is consistent with what, you know, we've tried to maintain over at the shoot house, from the city's perspective. And I'm going to, on a limb, and say the same thing's true of occasions. We never hear any complaints over there, so.
Any other comments from council? What are your thoughts on adding the condition to be number nine on the traffic?
We need something for traffic control.
Do we need a formal motion to, about that, or can we just ask for that?
I think if you, you can make it part of the motion.
Okay.
And I think traditionally what's happened is, is generally a motion to approve the conditional use and adopt the recommendations. And then as part of that, you could add an additional recommendation. Even if you decided, even if everybody up there would kind of deny it, generally the motion is made in the affirmative. And then you vote yes or no on it. And so if you make the motion to approve the recommendation of planning and zoning with an additional condition, and then read that condition into the record, that would be the motion for you to vote on.
So you guys want to vote on this tonight, or you want to continue to vote?
I'm comfortable voting.
I don't think, I don't think this is about me.
Do you have a motion? Some, well, the motion would be to.
Adopt it.
Adopt it with the condition of.
The night.
I didn't believe that.
Yeah, I can agree or something.
Does adopting this then confirm or approve the whole of the dual amendments?
We're just listening what the curb adopted, and sort of.
Yeah, so this is putting it up for the.
Would that be a condition? We've got to put the condition in first, before.
All right, so I'll make a motion to adopt the Sord Farms conditional use plan with the added condition, which would be condition number nine. Vehicular access and egress to and from the property shall be designed and maintained so as not to create nuisance or safety issues or concerns on surrounding public streets and roads. A second. The first and second?
Mr. Potts?
In favor of the motion?
Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
No. I didn't know.
This is just for the motion.
I know. I did say no.
How?
Is this voting for the traffic?
No, it's just voting for the motion.
This is voting to approve the motion or approve the project?
Approve the conditional use.
Conditional use for number nine, to add it.
Yes.
No, no, this, as I understood it, this is a motion to accept the planning and zoning commission.
With that additional.
Which, with.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So this is voting to approve or deny the Sord Farms conditional use plan?
With the additional.
With the addition of traffic.
Yeah.
So we're going, so we've made a motion, we've seconded it, and now we're voting to either accept the conditional use with the added, you know, condition, or deny it with the additional condition.
Does that mean we're going, is this a vote for the Sord Farms?
This is a vote, yeah, this is a vote. And it's either yes or no.
It's either yes or no.
Okay, I see, okay.
So you're going to start over here?
Okay, so.
So, just to be clear, that this vote, yes or no, you're voting yes or no to accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendations with all nine conditions?
Correct.
And approve? And approve the continuation?
Now, this is not, so this is, we're going to end the public hearing. So this will end the public hearing, we're going to vote either yes or no on whether we accept the planning commission's recommendations with the addition.
With number nine.
With the addition of our.
Okay.
And.
So is there going to be a second vote? No.
No.
And I suppose it's not this much, you've said it already, but perhaps you should formally close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll try and help him.
Before, before we vote?
Before we vote?
Yeah, votes are separate, well, no, you're right. You're right, you can do it any way, but.
I thought it was going to be public hearings.
I think that's a good idea.
So this vote basically determines whether New Franklin approves this?
That's right.
That's right.
Okay, so we will start over.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaper?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
No.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
So now, well, the motion carries over to, and this will close the public hearing. You're all done?
So now we're going to enter the next public hearing, which is for charter amendments. And we have Mr. Stock here to go over those amendments.
That's I got, I'll read through them, and, okay, I'm going to stand up here. I just want to start by thanking my, our other committee, our commission members. We had myself, Mark Webb, Judy Williams, Rosie McCallan, Dylan, Scott Fisher, Lynn Clark, Carol Adamson. We had several meetings where we went over the complete charter, front to back, everything. We had recommendations from our council, stuff we looked at, some of the stuff we, you know, went through, accepted, some of the stuff we weren't too sure about, think it needs some further conversation through this next year. So we came up with seven, seven different charter amendments, which will be going on the ballot for everybody to vote on, come up with that. So we're going to start with this Article 4.06, powers of council. We amended section 4.06810 to read as follows. The power to approve all contracts entered into by the municipality which require expenditures in excess of, it was ten thousand, we're going to ask them to add to fifteen thousand. Not a big jumble with it, this has been since the beginning of our charter, how many years ago, that it stayed at ten. At this point, what this does is let the mayor make some decisions and purchases that up to fifteen thousand can be done in the mayor's office without consent. Is that a good explanation?
Yes, yes, yes.
Secondly, we have Article 5.05, committee deliberations. Amend the second paragraph to read as follows. Said committees shall consider the proposed legislation actions separately and or jointly, and shall report their recommendations to council for final deposition. Said committees shall keep written and or add more electronic minutes to all proceedings. Okay, pretty much a dry on that one. We have Article 5.15, public notice. Amend the first paragraph to read as follows. The public notice, as required by law or by this charter or by ordinance, shall be given to resolutions, ordinances, statements, measures, orders, proclamations, and reports by publishing in a newspaper of general circulation in the city or by posting on the city website and social media. What we're striking out of, asking to strike out of this is, at one point it said be posted in five public places, which we're going to go with, we think, have it through the paper and on our website electronically should suffice for that. All right, we're going to move to Article 7.07, charter review commission. Amend the third paragraph to read as followed. Again, this is just going back to the city website and social for any kind of publications and take away the five public places within the city. So that just kind of touches back to the other one. Article 8.02, finance department, amend the fourth paragraph of the section 8.02d to read as follows. Again, this is the, moving to ten to fifteen thousand, which is another place in the charter that has to be taken care of. Article 9.03, nominations, amend the second paragraph to read as follows. In the event that is necessary to hold a primary election, such nonpartisan primary election shall be held in the municipality on the first Tuesday following the first Monday in May. That's changed from the, what we had in the report, which is eighth Tuesday prior to the, such municipal election. So what this does is get the city of New Franklin on board with everybody else in Son of County about primaries. So we had a little thing that happened last year, where there was something put on the ballot for an issue, nobody knew about it, how many people voted on it?
Like seven or eight.
And it cost the city tens of thousands of dollars, because it was just coming up in a special election. So this puts everything back on, so what happens then is, if we have a primary or somebody in the city wants to hit something on the ballot, it's, everybody from Son of County, everybody's got something on the ballot, everybody pitches in for that stuff. Instead of we were actually left out to dry, and we had to pitch what on our own. So that's a very good one that we're going to hopefully get people to vote for that one. Article 1, 0.07, oath of office. Amend the first paragraph to read. Every elected official of the municipality and every appointed board and commission member shall be required to subscribe to an oath of affirmation that the elected officer, board, and commission member will be in all respects faithfully discharged of their duties of his or her office before entering the duties. We just actually, this was only for the mayor and council, but we're going to like to see add the board and the commission members take the same oath. And, yep, that'll do it. So that's seven, and we're going to ask council to support us on this and pass it on their first reading tonight, because this is going to go on and out for everybody to vote on. This is, we went, like we said, we went through everything on this charter. So the charter gets reviewed every five years, and this was some things we came up with, and we really like council to support us on this, and we're going to move forward.
Are there any questions, comments?
All right, thank you very much.
Questions? Anything from council? We'll go over this in a few days' time. So if there's no comments or questions, we'll close this public hearing.
So I have a question about something prior to this, is that now, or is that?
That will be a public comment when we actually start meeting. All right, so no other questions or comments, we'll close this public meeting, public hearing, and we will start our normally scheduled council meeting of the city of New Franklin for May fifteenth, 2024.
Committee meeting?
We start. So our first meeting?
The following.
Yeah, our.
So we're going to open the laws and ordinance committee meeting at six forty-five P.M. We have one, two, three, four, five, six resolutions. I was just going to read all of them in concurrence, and then we can come back and comment on them. All of these were discussed by Mr. Stock. So ordinance number twenty-four oh zero one, an ordinance submitting to the electors of the city of New Franklin a proposal to amend section 5.05 of the charter and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage. Ordinance number twenty-four oh zero two, an ordinance submitting to the electors of the city of New Franklin a proposal to amend section 9.03 of the charter and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage. Ordinance twenty-four oh zero three, an ordinance submitting to the electors of the city of New Franklin a proposal to amend section 10.07 of the charter and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage. Ordinance twenty-four oh zero four, an ordinance submitting to the electors of the city of New Franklin a proposal to amend sections 4.06 and 8.02 of the charter and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage. Finally, twenty-four oh zero five, an ordinance submitting to the electors of the city of New Franklin a proposal to amend sections 5.15 and 7.07 of the charter and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage. So, all these are ordinance, my understanding is council really has no say in this, is that right, according to the charter?
Right, we need to adopt them, to push forward to the board of elections, but we can't alter or amend or do anything to the ordinances as it presented this.
And so we, a little eight, two, and three, and then just vote on?
What's the thoughts of everybody as far as you guys want to vote on it tonight? You guys?
I want to vote.
Okay.
Yeah? Okay, so we can close the, or do you have anything?
Nope, it's your council who pressed for time. I really.
Yeah. You got till, we got till August seventh. You understand you can't make any changes?
I understand.
All right, okay. And the charter requires council to pass it.
Pass it.
Just want you to know that. You can pass it tonight, or you can come back in June sixteenth and pass it, or you might do it the other day. Where you going, when you want to, but it's got to be down there by August seventh to be on the ballot, to be consistent with your obligation under the charter.
Any other questions? Somewhere's going to.
I will close the laws and ordinance committee at seven, or six forty-eight P.M.
All right, our next committee meeting is going to be finance committee, Mr. Potts?
Thank you, we will open a finance committee at six forty-eight, and we have two resolutions. Resolution twenty-four R three, create a resolution creating a separate fund for the Office of Criminal Justice Studies, OCJS, grant for plate body form cameras and authorizing appropriations to the Office of Criminal Justice Studies, grant fund, fund twenty fifty-five, in the amount of seventy-one thousand, thirty-two dollars, thirty-one cents, and be firing in emergency. And to go along with that would be resolution twenty-four R three four, a resolution authorizing the advance of funds from the general fund to the Office of Criminal Justice Studies Grant Fund and declaring emergency, in its core amount of seventy-one thousand, thirty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. So I'm guessing that this is a reimbursement type of grant, and we need to put the money great in the account, put the money into the account, buy the equipment, and then we get reimbursed.
Yes, it's, and technical.
Yes, it's, in technical terms, it's an advance, but it works like a reimbursement. The, the General Fund is putting that money in, and then the General Fund will get that money back. And the reason it needs to be a separate fund is because it's a sub grant of a federal grant, and all federal grants have to have a separate fund by law.
Okay. Fantastic, fantastic. We have the grant. What's your comments? Number four, maybe three, Barry?
Yes, yes, Mr. Pross.
And we'll close Finance Committee meeting at 7, 6:50.
Our next committee is Safety Committee, Mr. Jones.
Open it at 6:50 and a half. Resolution Number 24R45. A resolution to adopt the 2004 Summit County Emergency Management Agency Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and declaring that the resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And I think we do this every so often, am I right? It says that 14R19, resolution, was adopted in 2014. And then in 2019, we adopted Resolution 19R22.
It actually started in '09, in fact. And it's, well, it's under state law that the counties are required to adopt, to have in place an emergency management plan as a mitigation plan. And that started in '09, and then it's a five-year renewal that they're required by the state. They've been working on it for the past year. They solicited input from us. It, it's a very thick document, a couple hundred pages. There's copies that we, we forwarded copies to the council as soon as I got them. And I put this on now so we've been, because we wouldn't be together again until June. But it's sort of a perfunctory thing that we're required to have in place as well. And our safety forces were involved in the review of the previous plan to see if there was a need to add anything in addition. Probably the primary, the primary issue we have that's specific, there's a number of issues that are, that are general to all the jurisdictions. But the ones that are primary specific to us have to do with Minnesota goes for, and the dam, and flooding on, on Main Street. And so we've promoted that, and we're, we're still chasing ODR money to, to make that happen. And it's kind of raising us on the, on the list of hazards that hopefully we get to the point where we get the money to get that done. I think ODNR intends to do, I don't wanna get us too far off the field. I think they intend to do that. They spend a lot of money on the dams already around the lake. They know that's, that's in their, in, in sight. So that's, that's an example of the kind of things that are included in this plan.
Sounds good. So I would like to read three brief readings. If you guys are okay with that, go ahead and pass it to them. And I will close the meeting at 6:54.
Our next committee meeting is Community Development, Mr. Shaffer.
We'll open Community Development at 6:53. I've had a second reading into Resolution Number 24R-41. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Town Planning Practice LLC for the implementation of Phase 2 of the zoning diagnostic report regarding the code maintenance and declaring an emergency. Comments?
If I may, to those sponsors, I'm recommending an amendment to this. And I, I sent that out to council. I hope you got a chance to see it, to send it to the board as well. And the amendment would be, first of all, then the title. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Town Planning Practice LLC for completion of Phase 1 and, and then we go with the implementation of Phase 2. And then in Section 1, we have that same inclusion. For direction and assistance in completion of Phase 1 and implementation of Phase 2. The, his contract ran through April on Phase 1. The, the proposal to work on Phase 2 is effective May 1st. We're very close to finishing up Phase 1. There's a hearing tomorrow. Yeah, I think tomorrow on Article 8. And once that hearing is over, we'll have that presented to council for, in another public hearing and for consideration. But that pretty much wraps up Phase 1. He's already started on Phase 2. I, I think that he's done fabulous work, and it's been a valuable asset for us. And the contract was at $2,500 a month that expires in, in April. And this would go up 100 bucks to 2,600 to keep him on board and keep us moving towards. A little more fine tuning, I mean, for instance, what the, one of the things that's maybe as important as anything else in Phase 2 is our matrix. If, if you're familiar with the code and, you know, what's, you know, what's permitted, what isn't, what type of activities, we struggle with that. Because there's, there's uses that are relatively common, and they're not specified in our matrix. So that's one of the key issues. So we kind of did the housecleaning in Phase 1. Now we're gonna get more down to, you know, the substantive stuff, potentially into districts, et cetera. And so there'll be plenty of discussion on that, but that's, you know, that's really the second phase to bring our code up to a manageable, 21st century code. So anyway, that's, I, I would present this to you with the amendment that I just suggested.
So I guess my first question would be, I know I sent an email regarding this, but why wouldn't we just finish Phase 1 in the original contract by just amending the, the schedule and just paying him off that 2,500 for another month of due?
Well, if, if it was gonna be another month of due, I'd, and if he wasn't gonna start on Phase 2, I don't wanna slow him down on Phase 2. I mean, he's already starting on that. So that's my thinking on that. If, if we were sitting here and we knew we were gonna take three more months to finish up Phase 1, I would agree. I would just come to you and ask to, to extend this another few months. But because we're very close to the conclusion, at least particularly his work on it, on Phase 1, and we don't wanna slow the process down. I wanna keep him moving. I prefer to get him started on, to keep him working on Phase 2.
As far as interaction with the, the zoning committee, how, how has that gone? Did, and maybe this is some discussion with those folks. Do they feel like they're having a lot of input? Do they, or do they feel like they're being driven to conclusions? I, I don't know if we've had those discussions, and I think that's maybe some valid discussion to add with them. Just, if nothing else, maybe everything is great. But if nothing else, at least we ask that question. And if, if there are some concerns, maybe that helps steer him, get him back on, on track. And the reason I bring this up, sorry, that's why, the reason I bring this up is there was some stuff that was brought up during some of the recommendations, if you will, mainly in 800, that clearly the recommendations didn't match the community. You know, there, there's stuff that was way stricter than what we already had in there. And after community engagement and involvement, stuff, those got dialed back where they, they should be. So that, that's what kind of brings that, that question and comment up is, you know, have them get a better pulse on the community before these things are brought in. It's wasting time, get them back where they need to be.
I, first of all, I've had those conversations with, with various members of planning and zoning, and everything has been expressed to me as a positive. That he's very knowledgeable. He's been through this process a number of times in other cities. You guys are an encyclopedia of this stuff. He's got 40 years of history. In terms of what's presented, and then the revision, I think that's a positive aspect. As opposed to, I haven't seen Mr. Guerra being so steadfast that, oh no, you know, we're not listening to anybody, this is the way it ought to be. I think where he starts from, in my experience with him, and there's a lot of time spent other than in these meetings in preparation for this, as he's going through these things, is here's what's, here's the way it is in a lot of communities. Here's the way it is in most communities. So we're gonna, we're gonna put it together that way to present it. And then you get input, which I think has been fabulous. For instance, this is like, I think, the fourth meeting, if I'm not mistaken, on, on Article 8. So there's no ramrod, and the public comes and they have their comments and, and planning and zoning them. And not, not Mr. Guerra, from that point on, decides what's in and what's out. So I don't think that he's off-pulse with what he begins with. I think he's consistent with what you're gonna see in most cities. But we're a little different out here. And so I think there's, you know, and, and I will say, I'm, you know, I'm not promoting the guy, but, you know, he's really good. I'm, you know, I didn't know who he was. I knew he had a good background. But at least my perception of him, he's really good. And that's one of the qualities of his personality. He's not the guy who always has to be right. Hey, if that's what the people want, this makes sense, good, let's write it up this way. So I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, that part of it. You know, I know council's been to a number, a number of your council members have been to a number of these sessions. So I know you've had an opportunity to see him at work. You know, if there's, I mean, if we, you know, the alternative is, I can come back with another resolution, and I tell them to stop work on Phase 2. And we'll see about getting him paid until Phase 1 is completed, and then we'll come back and get him started on Phase 2. But time really is of the essence in this zoning code. I mean, every day there's a potential for somebody to walk in with something that doesn't fit in our code because we have a township code from 25 years ago. And it wasn't built for the city. So I, I think the sooner, from the city's perspective, that we tighten this thing up and, and make it consistent with what's going on in other municipalities, the better off we're gonna be. And I won't try to pull specific examples, but they're there. So that's why I recommended the way that it went. And again, I guess I'm just saying, the feedback I'm getting from planning and zoning has been positive.
I run the numbers just based on the, you know, going back to what I originally said about paying him for Phase 1 and then continuing on. I, I think we actually saved some money by entering into this contract because we're gonna basically save 1,200 bucks or something, basically, you run out that downer. My experience with Fred, you know, because I've been to pretty much all the meetings and we've had a lot of citizen engagement, due to concerns, and I don't call panic, but concerns. And all, you know, talking with Mr. Guerra about it, he's been very receptive, and he has made adjustments. And I think 800 is where it's, it's very, it fits what the community wants. I just wanted to raise those concerns and find out with the rest of the council.
So, I mean, I think Phase 1 was supposed to be a kind of a cleanup.
Yes.
And it turned into much more than just a cleanup on the code?
No.
What is, what is Phase 2's purpose? Is it gonna be a cleanup? Is it going to be a change of the zoning code? Is there an agenda here for the code? I know that our code needs fixed and it needs updated, but there's no reason to, to rush so fast that we're making mistakes by trying to do it fast.
I think he spells out pretty good in, in, in the attachment.
Well, it was spelled out last night, too, and it didn't look more than that.
I don't know that we did, Mr. Shaffer. I don't think we did. We didn't change any zoning districts. What we did was, we corrected a couple of things that, that the public was very interested in, beans and chickens. Beyond that, it really was mostly housekeeping stuff. It was, get all the conditional, for instance, Article 2 now has all of the, all of the variety of things that will come before planning and zoning in council. Whether it's variances, whether it's conditional uses, et cetera, those are now all in one chapter. They were spread out in a variety of different chapters. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a struggle. It was suggested at one time, they tried to revise the entire thing and bring it to council, but in the meantime, we have, we have holes in our, in our code. The people wanna use a specific use, we don't have a definition for that use, but it's everywhere else. I mean, an example is attached single family. We had no definition of attached, we're the only city I know of that didn't have a definition for attached single family. And they're everywhere, and it's something that a lot of people out here wanted. But we couldn't even give it because we didn't have a definition. It was nowhere in the code. So that's just one example. So really, I, I don't mean to be argumentative. I really think it was as much housekeeping. I think the substantive part does come now, where we get into this matrix. What do we wanna permit in these various districts? You know, what should be conditional, what should be permitted? So I think we're gonna get in, which we should, and, and take a look at our zoning districts and the definition of what's allowed in each district, for instance. So now's the time for that discussion. I think it's gonna, those are gonna be important discussions. That's what Phase 2 will be about.
Okay, well, I appreciate the, the feedback, and these are questions that I'm receiving from the public. Not necessarily all of my comments, but from the people I represent.
I appreciate that. Yeah, listen, I never mean to come at you hard, and I know you don't either. I, I thank you for who you are, and I respect what you're, what you're doing.
We can go out there and have a good draw and go have a beer afterwards.
It's all good. I'm not throwing them in the van. Wait, have a beer. Sweet.
Okay, Barry's address is?
And any other comments?
You guys wanna wave to three or you wanna wave to?
I'm comfortable with waving the third reading.
I'm just, I guess we'll wave to three, and then we will close the Community Development meeting at 7:50.
With that, I'll officially call it one of the City of New Franklin Council meetings for May 15th, 2024. It's gonna be the Pledge of Allegiance, and the time is 7:06.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can you call more, please?
Mr. Scott?
President.
Mr. Shaffer?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Amen?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of May 1st, 2024.
Second?
In the first and the second?
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amen?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
All right, the approval of the financials for April 2024. I'm gonna ask to defer that to the next meeting due to the financials not being completed yet. All right, we're on to public comments. This is the audience's opportunity to make a comment of something you may have heard at one of the meetings, or a comment or concern you have for us to address. And just please keep, say your name, address, and keep your comments to Florence, please. Any call comments? Seeing the comments, we're gonna move on to our first reading of, this is gonna be the Laws and Ordinances Committee. Mr. Wolf?
Ordinance Number 24-O-01. An ordinance submitting to the electors of the city of New Franklin a proposal to amend Section 5.05 of the charter and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution, would you reconsider?
I gave you first.
I'm addressing Mr. Shaffer. Am I aligned on me?
Oh.
Permission is?
I thought you were talking to me.
Yes. Would, would you consider reconsidering, going to a second reading on this?
No, sir.
Okay.
I asked. This resolution was assigned to the Laws and Ordinances Committee, and we're going to ask for more time.
Time is requested, time is granted. Kelly, next one, please.
Ordinance 24-O-02. An ordinance submitting to the electors of the city of New Franklin a proposal to amend Section 9.03 of the charter and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This ordinance was brought before the Law and Ordinances Committee, or I'm sure this resolution was brought before the, oh, it wasn't ordered, so I'm sorry, yeah. And we're going to ask for more time.
Time is requested, time is granted. Kelly, next one, please.
Ordinance Number 24-O-03. An ordinance submitting to the electors of the city of New Franklin a proposal to amend Sections 10.07 of the charter and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This ordinance was brought before the Law and Ordinances Committee, and we're requesting more time.
Time is requested, time is granted. Kelly, next one, please.
Ordinance Number 24-O-04. An ordinance submitting to the electors of the city of New Franklin a proposal to amend Sections 4.06 and 8.02 of the charter and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This ordinance was brought before the Laws and Ordinances Committee, and we're asking for more time.
Time is requested, time is granted. Kelly?
Ordinance 24-O-05. An.
Ordinance twenty-four dash O dash zero five, an ordinance submitting to the electors of the city of New Franklin, a proposal to amend sections five point one five and seven point zero seven of the charter and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This ordinance was brought in front of the laws and ordinance committee and we are requesting more time.
Time is requested, time is granted. Kelly?
Resolution twenty-four dash R dash forty-three, a resolution creating a separate fund for the Office of Criminal Justice Studies, OCJS Grant for Police By-Morne Cameras and authorizing appropriations to the Office of Criminal Justice Studies, OCJS Grant Fund, Fund Two Zero Five Five, in the amount of seventy-one thousand thirty-two dollars and thirty-one cents, and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance is assigned to the finance committee, uh, and we move to wave the three readings on resolution twenty-four R forty-three.
Second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-four R forty-three.
Second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Kelly?
Resolution twenty-four dash R dash forty-four, a resolution authorizing the advance of funds from the general fund to the Office of Criminal Justice Studies, Grant Fund, and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to finance committee. We move to wave the three readings on resolution twenty-four R forty-four.
Second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-four R forty-four.
Second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four dash R dash forty-five, a resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty-four Summit County Emergency Management Agency's Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan and declaring that the resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
I'd like to make a motion to wave the three reading for resolution number twenty-four R twenty-five.
Second.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass, uh, resolution number twenty-four R forty-five.
Second.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Kelly?
Second reading, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash forty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Town Planning Practice LLC for implementation of Phase Two of the zoning diagnostic report regarding code maintenance and declaring an emergency.
Miss Keller, I'm, I'm, uh, I propose an amendment to that. That needs to be, uh, part of that needs to go into the title.
Yes. All right. Let me re-read you.
Thank you.
Twenty-four dash R dash forty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Town Planning Practice LLC for completion of Phase One and implementation of Phase Two of the zoning diagnostic report regarding code maintenance and declaring an emergency.
And can you, uh, uh, address also the amendment in section one?
Section one will also state the mayor's hereby authorized and directed to enter into an agreement with Town Planning Practice LLC for direction and assistance in completion of Phase One and implementation of Phase Two of the zoning diagnostic report at a monthly rate of two thousand six hundred dollars per month pursuant to the proposal attached here to it, Exhibit A, commencing May first, two thousand twenty-four through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Total compensation shall be in the amount of thirty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars with provision for a ten percent contingency as warranted.
Thank you, Kelly. This was brought before committee, brought the committee. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, wave the three on resolution twenty-four R dash forty-one as amended.
Second.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash R dash forty-one as amended.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
All right, that wraps up our consent agenda. We got no third readings, no pending legislation, uh, continued condition and, uh, favorite time of the week.
I just wondered if I was gonna survive. Thanks, well, you'd be happy to know I'm not much. Sail into summer, Sunday, uh, noon to five P M. We have some of our, uh, unselfish, loyal, uh, commission, tutor commission volunteers that are here in the audience, but, uh, we got everything in time. It's, uh, uh, we got forty-plus vendors, um, we have, uh, cart to bring in from the State Park parking lot. Uh, there'll be music, uh, there'll be food trucks, uh, there's, uh, alcoholic and non-alcoholic beverages, there are pontoon boat rides, uh, and you get a chance to see the new docks. Uh, you know, docks are, so, uh, please come out on, uh, this Sunday from, uh, noon to five P M. Uh, secondly, I want to, uh, thank the Manchester Senior Class, Senior Class Advisor Mike Ankrum, Superintendent, uh, soon to be gone, sadly, James Robinson. They were both here on site pushing wheelbarrows around and, uh, pushing mulch around. Out here, you can see it on our campus, they were also over at the State Park, uh, they were also over at the Tudor House, uh, the busload of kids, and I'll have a picture of me in there tomorrow, uh, the young men, Jacob was there, yes, he was. Uh, and so we want to thank them for, for what they do and who they are and their contribution. Um, I'm probably forgetting some of them. The only thing I, that one I mentioned isn't important, but, um, not that the other two weren't. Uh, the, uh, you, you will recall, if you've lived here long enough, that there was, uh, a, a issue with the BP gas line, uh, and, uh, over just on the other side of Center Road, uh, pretty much from Main Street to Manchester Road. Uh, that occurred back in the nineties and we are now about thirty years into the remediation process. And I was contacted recently by BP, uh, and also by the EPA. Uh, they've done a variety of things over that time. They purchased some of the properties, they put wells in, uh, a number of the properties, steel encased wells, uh, they're still monitoring on a regular basis. They have to answer and, and, and provide, uh, uh, reports to the EPA on a regular basis, uh, and we are in that process. Uh, and so they've, they've submitted a feasibility study for what they'd like to do going forward based upon their results. Uh, you, the council, uh, was good enough, well, I mentioned to you that we retain an account, a consultant for our purposes on this, and I can tell you that's been a valuable tool so far. Uh, the, um, there's a variety of alternatives that they're, uh, that they're suggesting. Uh, I believe there are still fifty homes that are in the remediation plan. They know, they own a number of those. Uh, for instance, if the southeast corner of, uh, Center and Red is one of their houses. So, uh, but a number of those, we have people living in. And then there's areas, you know, that are almost adjacent to that. So, uh, there is going to be a public hearing. Uh, initially, it was gonna be, well, it's currently scheduled for June eleventh and all these people are gonna be invited and the plan was gonna be, uh, was gonna be presented. Uh, based on discussions I've had with our consultant, uh, we have some other ideas that might be more beneficial or that at least we would like them to consider. I won't go into details at this point in time, I just want you to be aware. Uh, and I reached out to, uh, EPA this afternoon, I just met with the consultant today because it took a while, first of all, to retain him, and then he had to review all the records. Uh, and so, uh, based on that, I've asked them to move that here, that public hearing or public meeting back. Uh, and, uh, and then we're gonna be looking for an opportunity to sit with them, discuss some of the ideas we might have. What I also anticipate is, uh, we're, we're gonna be contacting not just those fifty homes, but neighborhoods adjacent to it, so they have a sense of what's happening. Uh, and roughly, it's the area from Center, from Maine to Manchester, going back about as far as where Bonnie Lou comes out, that, it, it, that's more extreme, that, that's really out of limits. That's, that's like two streets beyond their study area, but I think we want to put people on notice, uh, of, of, you know, what's going on and what's happening. So what I'm thinking is, we're trying to move this hearing, this BP meeting back, uh, probably have an interim meeting with, uh, with those residents. Um, Mr. Schaefer, I think this is your word?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, unfortunately, I'm not speaking to you anymore, so you're not gonna be able to.
It'll be easy, rest in peace.
Make your money. You really liked this report. No, so I'll get with you on this as well.
Okay.
And, uh, and we'll coordinate something, I think, to, uh, to, uh, to really talk directly to the people that are affected or even potentially affected.
I'll, that's not gonna be over there too, sir.
All right, all right. So, uh, so that's happening, I wanted you to be aware of it and I'll keep you posted as it goes forward. Um, and that's all I got.
Did you mention Samuel or something?
I did mention Samuel.
Mention Memorial Day, right?
That's a great idea, because we're not gonna be back before that.
Yeah.
Yeah, gosh. Well, it's, uh, gonna be on Memorial Day. But, uh, gosh, we're honoring Ed Fast. And, uh, first, we're honoring everybody who served, of course, but, uh, Ed, uh, as a chaplain for, uh, the, a number of the, uh, American Legion's posts, uh, and he has been at virtually every one of these that I've been at. And he's often there with the, with the, uh, with the gun salute group. Uh, he's a graduate of Manchester High School. I knew he was a veteran, I didn't know his story. And somebody started whispering, saying a few things, you know, Ed did this and Ed did that. Uh, and, uh, it turns out that Ed was a combat medic, two tours in Vietnam, uh, three silver stars, uh, two purple hearts. Uh, and he's, uh, and then went on to, uh, they, they sent him down to San Antonio and, uh, he got his nurse's license and he was stationed at Walter Reed Hospital in Washington, D C for a number of years, uh, where, uh, and I think he rubbed shoulders with, uh, President Nixon and, uh, uh, maybe, maybe I was not, and his story is incredible. And, uh, I, I, you'll hear me say this a few more times, maybe one of the most humble men you'll ever meet because I knew none of this. And he's, he was there every year and praising and congratulating the people that were being honored, and here's a guy that had, you know, we probably should've got around to him much sooner, so I'm just thrilled, you know it. And I'm just, uh, I'm thrilled that, uh, he's gonna be on Walter Reed. Thanks, Mr. Powell, for inviting me. So, hey, if you, uh, we're always looking for additional people to participate. If you have a group that wants to be in the parade, let us know. If you got an old vehicle that you want to put in the parade, that's good. Uh, if you know how to walk on stilts, uh, we're gonna have the stilt walkers there, uh, you can come and do that. Uh, and we have a bike decorating contest and all the fun of old fashioned stuff. So thank you, appreciate you for your time.
I'm, I'm assuming council will be, or has it been, we had it in years past?
I'll get it right in.
I'll, I'll bring the vehicle.
I love it, I'll bring the decorations. I can.
What do you want me to bring? I'll, 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 I'll.
Can't you do a career job in place of us?
I do have one more, too.
I can't remember that.
All right.
Also, I mentioned this in charge.
Finally, the dragon boat. And we'll be defending our, oh, man, yeah, it's just quite a pair of gasses. But, uh, we're gonna miss you. Uh, but anyway, the dragon boat race is coming up, it's, uh, July twentieth, and, uh, we will have a team and we're, we're looking for contributions. Um, the service department got out in front and, uh, uh, our deputy service director, Brian Kepler, and our road superintendent, Dale Corley, already made definite, uh, made donations, as did, uh, one of the members of council. I don't want to single them out, but thank you, Mrs. Jones. Mr. Powell already committed, and I, so do what you can, if you will, uh, and we, it takes twelve hundred dollars for us, for the city to enter, and we don't, we don't use city money, we use donations, I'll be throwing in mine, uh, and, uh, just try to save my seat in the boat. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, but the public is certainly invited to, uh, participate by donation as well, and if you've never been to that one, we'll talk more about it, that's a great event. It's press cancer survivors and it's a glorious day on the beach, it's a festival, so that's happening also. I, if you can get, if, if you're able to donate, if you can get it in by the end of next week, if you can.
It's gonna be hard to beat, they were already down in South Carolina a week long.
Where they are at, okay.
Oh, my God.
Hands off, too, man. Yeah, it's a special group. That's all.
Our next, uh, second portion here is, uh, finance report, Sue.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, just one thing to kind of, obviously, our normal, everyday stuff is going on, um, but also, we're still working on gap, we're finishing that up, it has to be done by the end of this month. Um, and right now, I'm working with that, with our gap repairs on capital assets, where we're updating any new vehicles, machinery, land, all those kinds of things, uh, anything that's a capital asset. Then they, then they do the, they do the computations for compensation and those schedules that go with those things. So it's kind of, we, we pull in the help from all the departments, say, okay, because it lists, obviously, get old because they, you know, it's, it's things that have a long shelf life, some of them. So we pull in the department heads and they check the lists, for example, vehicles, which ones, which ones would, did we trade in that need to come off the list and which ones, you know, are we, do we have everything that's new on the list? Even though we can go through the paperwork of the resolutions and the reports, it still takes double checking to make sure everything's included on the list and it also gets audited, so we want to make sure that we have everything, all our decks in a row. So that's the big focus right now. Um, we pretty much have everything else completed for the gap, so, um, they should be in good shape to get us our financial report, um, really close to the end of this month. So that's the big thing we're working on right now. And that's all I have.
And your business?
I have gold and new business. We're going to be at Sail Into Summer, uh, passing out popcorn for the farmer's market and we're starting the farmer's market on July the eleventh. And we still need people to sign up for it and we'll be volunteers also to help. We're going to do, um, Senator Committee also. Do you want to speak, Eric?
Yeah, we're just looking for some, uh, volunteers to, uh, help us, uh, set up some programs at the Senator to help do cleanup and different things around throughout the year. So if you know a volunteer, uh, throw your name and address or phone number to any council member, uh, and if you don't know them, but you think they might be good, send their name and address or phone number and I will call.
We will, and you don't have to be there every cleanup, just, no, just hit them this whenever you can.
Right.
Any new business?
You said July eleventh, Thursday, right? Thursday, okay.
From Thursday from three until seven, they send it right out here at the, um, City Hall. Thank you, David.
Yeah, we have it Thursday. Yes.
From three until seven, so you can take home supplies, throw, don't let anyone come home without drinks. We'll take home supplies every Thursday.
Uh, I've got something for new business. Uh, we didn't do it with the last name, I, I talked about doing it this meeting, uh, Uh, we didn't do it with the last name, I, I talked about doing it this meeting, uh, Citizen of the Month. That's a program we started earlier this year. Uh, I, we had a, actually, Mr. Schaefer had nominated a, a resident. Uh, and, uh, we're, we're going to give him the Citizen of the Month. That's John Cousins. Uh, John is a longtime New Franklin resident. Uh, he actually moved here back in nineteen eighty-eight, and his wife had three children. Uh, they went through the Manchester school system. Uh, John is heavily involved with the Scouts, to the point where he has been with them, he, he's been with them maybe near twenty-five years. Uh, John donates a lot of time, basically mentors these kids, and he's always there for them. Uh, he couldn't be here tonight because he's preparing meals for about three hundred kids for this coming weekend. And he does that a lot. So I'll coordinate with John and the mayor to get him his certificate and picture and stuff, but... I, I couldn't think of somebody who does yet who, who basically exemplifies what this, this acknowledgement is more than the John. I mean, it's hard, whether he just talks on and on about these activities that he do with the Scouts and all this involved and stuff, and I, I... I'm just very happy to have somebody like this now, and I'd like to, uh...
Hey, good, really a nice young man, very, and you're my guest of a lot of times with Scouts. I'm always there to put time into their children.
Yeah, he's definitely involved with kids. Uh, another thing I wanted to mention, we got an email earlier today from a resident involving some boards and commissions, and we're, we're gonna have some discussions on that, and the mayor had addressed it and stuff, so... It just, I just wanted to bring up, we, we acknowledged that we got that, and we'll, we'll get back to that with some. Uh, that's all I have for the business side of that. All right, uh, public comments, any additional public comments?
Shannon, good morning, six, seven, eight, nine, who's she wrote? Um, just picking up on a touch on quickly, since Kevin brought up Scouts this past, uh, more Scout work list that they had. Um, was back on track with a really good turnout, so it was, it was very, I was supporting him. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to touch on was, um, Mr. Schaefer's comments about the cleaning up, um, or the thought of cleaning up the, the code maintenance. I think a lot of people thought that the first phase or the initial part of it was gonna be to get rid of redundancy and to make the system code, um, kind of like proofread, and then from that part, move on, and it's a lot of different fault more than that.
Any other public comments? I have a closed public comment. Uh, I'd like to call the executive session, and the email you guys, this would be to consider the appointment of a public employer official, and no decisions were made during this meeting, and we will, we can be in attendance.
He said appointment of a public employee?
To consider the appointment of a public employee or official.
Thank you.
It's second, and you have to have a vote to come into it.
Any comments, I'll do a second.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Ahm.
Yes.